Good evening. Welcome to the May 9, 2013 Board of Education meeting. We're going to start this meeting tonight with a public hearing about the 2013-2014 budget. So I'm officially calling this meeting to order, and Jim Fisher is going to present the budget.
Thank you, Susan. Tonight we have is the 12th, is the 13-14 budget that will be presented to the board on the 21st. Budget that will be proposed is $148,997.175. It was approved by the Board back in April, and it will be what we'll be asking the community to approve. We've gone through this at several meetings, and if there's questions from the Board, maybe right after we go through the three or four slides, we can entertain those, and then open it up for public comment. On the revenue side, balancing the budget at $148,997, we had some state aid numbers that came in close to the end of the process. We've accounted for that money. We also have a property tax levy, which is currently at $91,693.24, or 3.59 percent. And the note on that is, as you know, as we've gone through our property tax cap, our property tax cap is 4.36. The 3.59 is under the 4.36, which is allowable by state law. Our reserves, we have a five-year plan for reserves, will be in the third year. The first two years, in 2011-12, we used 1.4 million of the almost 14 million. In 12-13, this current year, we're using one, I'm sorry, this is current year, we're using $1,650,000. In 13-14, the proposed budget, we're estimating $2.6 million. In 14-15, 3.3 million, and in 15-16, 2.9 million. That leaves us with just over $2 million left for future years. So our property tax cap increases by $3.1 million, or 3.59 percent. Again, our limit is 4.36. The entire calculation is available on our website. Based on the property tax levy, our estimated assessment growth that we have received so far, are no change in the equalization rates. The estimated property tax increase is 2.67 percent. So our property tax levy, 3.59, but our property tax rate, which impacts homeowners, Individual rates for each of the towns, Webster, Penfield, Walworth, and Ontario, and they're slightly different because of equalization rates in counties. Also, Proposition 1 will be the second portion that the community will vote on. Proposition 1 is for school buses, $1,260,000. It's to purchase 10 large 65-passenger buses, 329-passenger buses, those are minibus. The financing for a total of $1,260,000. The buses that we'll be taking out of service will be sold sometime after these buses come in. And that the revenue that we'll receive has yet to be determined, as we haven't sold those yet. So what is this cost? If approved, we'll be financing these over a five-year period, and an annual cost of about $252,000 a year. We receive approximately 70 percent state aid, so the net cost annually is $75,600 plus interest, or 58.15 per bus over the five-year period. Also, we have community residents who will be asked to elect three individuals to serve on the Board of Education for a three-year term, starting July 1, 2013. Listed in 1 through 5 order, Paul Benz, Lisa Smith, Laura Harder, Mike Guston, and Tom Nuspeka. And now I'm going to ask a representative of our Budget Advisory Committee, who is would like to make some comments to the Board. I'm going to ask Bill Bennett to come up.
For the last two years, I've been a member of the Webster Budget Advisory Committee, and I wanted to make some comments on the process used to build this budget. The term is zero-based budgeting, but another, maybe better term, would be a zero-based justification. A little bit of the budget landscape is that currently we are working to create a budget while missing about $7.3 million. We're working with $7 million less state aid than we had in the 2009-2010 budget year. It's a very detailed time-consuming process, runs from January through May. And of the 729 teachers and 670 members in administration, probably a full 70 percent of the administrators and all the teachers are involved in building this budget. There's 11 school buildings, and the process is that each teacher has $0 to start with, and they, piece by piece, supplies, everything, build their budget from square one. They put together staffing, supplies, textbooks, and equipment needs. At the building level, they have meetings that buy subject types, such as science, language arts, and so on, to see if there's any, they can identify any common needs that they can share amongst the various buildings. In January, there's a building roll-up, and then, obviously, to the district roll-up. But on the expense control side, what we found pretty incredible is that there's an awful lot of district initiatives that have saved the district millions. Labor contract negotiations, about $1.75 million. Energy management initiatives saved about $500 million. The district's part of a healthcare consortia that has leveraged group healthcare purchasing, that saved about $122 million. Thirty-four cooperative bids to purchase supplies, fuel, and equipment, along with 18 other districts. We're participating in, along with another 330 New York public school districts, to help manage insurance and risk management costs. How did I see this process in my two years that I have worked? Extremely disciplined, rigorous, very innovative. There's an excellent, committed, skilled leadership team at the administration levels, and on the building and teacher levels, everybody's involved. It's a very, very empowering process. My overall experience on the Budget Advisory Committee was, I was very impressed with the diversity of the committee itself. Retirees, young parents with no children, kids, parents with multiple kids and multiple generations that have gone through. The district administration commitment and desire for our feedback, they took it all from us. They involved us at every stage, and they wanted to know and took to heart exactly what we were talking about. We, as a group, have gone out into the community as a much more educated group of people to be able to talk when we, to talk to people, to undo some mistruths about what people think about what the budget is built on and how the district does it. We have a much deeper appreciation of the district's academic excellence, from our great student athletes, the arts and musicians talents, the high achievers in AP. And it's an excellence that's been noted both at the county, state, and national levels. I would encourage anybody listening or watching tonight to join the Budget Advisory Committee next year. It was a very, very unique experience and extremely satisfying, and it was a pleasure to be part of this group. Thank you.
Bill, there might be questions from the Board. Certainly, you were well educated in a lot of the statistics. I just want to make sure that we, you had one at the beginning when you talked about 729 teachers and 640 something, all, that's all other staff, not just administrators. And I think it may have, it's administrators, support staff, and all our staff. We have about 1,400 employees altogether, so it's a very large district, but you did very well. Thank you.
So, Bill, I'd like to say thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your experience of the Building Advisory Committee. We do appreciate your serving, and we do appreciate the work that the committee did this year. Does anybody on the Board have any questions for Bill tonight?
Not a question. I want to thank you for the years you've served on it, too. It's a lot of time, it's time out of your busy day, but that's how you get information. And school budgets are very complicated. The financial laws seem to change every time you turn a corner, and it can be very confusing for people that don't deal with school budgets every single day. So the fact that the district went ahead and made this advisory committee, I think, is a great thing. And anybody that's watching on TV, I would encourage you to be a part of that next year. So, Bill, thank you.
Thanks, friends.
Thank you.
There is information about those meetings and the materials reviewed on our website in the budget area, if anybody's interested.
Great, thank you. Does the Board have any questions about the budget? Anything for Jim? Nothing for Bill? Nothing for Jim? Okay, I'd like to open up the floor. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment about the budget for Going once, going twice. Guess we're here for a different reason tonight. All right, then I guess we will close this public hearing for the budget for next year. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill. And now we're going to move on to the regular business meeting. And Mike, do you want to take over? You want your computer or mine?
I'll use mine. Okay. Did you use the pledge of allegiance?
No.
Oh, you didn't?
No, it's not on the agenda yet.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Well, then, we'll call to order our May 9 regular business meeting. Would you please stand with us as we say the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you recognize our Board of Scout? No?
No.
I see we have a scout in the audience tonight. Welcome. Are you here working on one of the merit badges? Why don't you stand up and introduce yourself? What troop you're from?
Hello, my name's Austin Dunn, I'm from Troop 363 from Webster.
Thank you. Hope you'll find something about the community here tonight. Okay. Board members, you had a chance to take a look at the agenda. Are there any alterations, or omissions, or anything to the agenda? May I have a motion, then, to accept the agenda as published?
So moved?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, there were no visitor speaking time for the budget. Are there any visitor speaking time that would like to just, in general, address the Board? Okay, we'll move on. And do we have any of our high school reps here tonight? I wanted to congratulate Juliana. Okay. PTA.
I'm a PTA.
Yeah, we'll see.
Hello. Denise. Okay, first time. Hi, I'm Denise Belvia, I'm the Secretary for Webster Central PTA, so I'll be giving you her updates. Webster PTA was recognized on Monday by the Genesee Valley PTA for 50 years of being a charter and as a PTA organization. So Cindy Barron was there to receive our award, so that was, I think, we're one of the only PTAs in Monroe County to have that distinction. We are also working right now on the Get Out the Vote campaign, so all our elementary buildings will be distributing flyers on the Friday before the Get Out the Vote, so we're asking all our reps to get those printed and out to their families. This week has been staff appreciation in most of our buildings, and they've been doing a wide variety of things. At Spry, we had a luncheon this week, that was, I think, a huge success. I know the high schools do things a little different, sometimes they do those at the end of the year. Also, Spry has been doing their spring listening posts, and so that's where we bring the senior citizens in, so that's what's been going on.
Well, let me introduce our next item by being a teacher for a moment, so Board, you can go to sleep for a few seconds. From ancient times, trees have had a symbolic meaning. Oak trees, throughout literature, are often regarded as wise and humble due to their usually extended age, which made them reference to elders who had known and witnessed many things. Oak trees symbolize courage and strength. Oak trees are believed to be the most powerful of trees, and Socrates even believed that oak trees had divine powers. What better way to symbolize our outstanding teachers than to bestow an oak tree honor upon them? And to introduce the recipients of this award, we have Wendy Sardella.
And Chris Kennesa.
That's right. And Chris from PTA. Sorry, Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. We have, we're going to share this tonight, because this is a joint effort. So I'm going to start with something pre-prepared, so that I don't forget anything. The Oak Tree Award recognition was first awarded in 2001 to recognize exemplary educators in the Webster School District. Since that year, two educators, one at the elementary and one at the secondary level, have been recognized for their teaching, their commitment to their students and to the community, and for their outstanding collegial and professional activities. Every day, extraordinary learning takes place in the classrooms of Webster. The Oak Tree recognizes this excellence. The nomination process for the Oak Tree is a simple one, but one that takes an individual to observe, note, and be motivated to write about their experiences. Thank you to those individuals who wish to publicly recognize these educators who have had an impact on their lives.
This year, 13 educators, seven elementary and six secondary, were nominated for this award. Some of these individuals have been nominated in previous years, and two were previous recipients. The Oak Tree is in a one-time recognition, so we are pleased to share this previous, or, we are pleased to share, with previous recipients, Cheryl Lynn Wilson and Maria Regillo. Their nomination, but the other 11 individuals were tasked with seeking out letters of recommendation from teaching colleagues, supervisors, and administrators, and faced with crafting vitas detailing their education, professional activities, community involvement, and educational philosophies. This takes a great deal of time. It is often said, being nominated is a reward in itself, and with all the demands in our personal and professional lives, not all the nominees completed the process. This year's nominees were, for elementary, Jennifer Hackett, Ann Murky, Julie Provanzano, Pam Smith, Claudia Uskold, Renette West, and Lisa Windrell. And for the secondary level, Cheryl Concordia, Terry Rogers, Todd Sumalis, and Todd Stahl. Congratulations to all our nominees.
The Oak Tree Committee met in late March to select this year's recipients. The members of this year's selection committee were Cindy Barron and Chris Kennesa, representing the Webster Central PTA, Jennifer Heefe, and Sue Hooper, representing elementary educators, and Lisa Bolick, and myself, representing secondary educators. These individuals gave a great deal of their personal time reviewing the information provided by the nominees, and I would like to thank them for their time with the committee.
Now, without further ado, this year's recipients for the Oak Tree Award are, for elementary, Renette West from Plank South. Renette has been teaching for 19 years, parent Kelly Nacastro nominated her. The award for secondary is Terry Rogers of Spry Middle School. Terry has been teaching for 27 years and was nominated by Administrator Joe Montemaro. Congratulations, Renette and Terry. Please join us in celebrating with them.
May we ask them to say a couple of words?
Of course.
If you'd like to come over.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm grateful to so many, and would like to thank some of you. First and foremost, my family for being here tonight, and an awesome show of support, as they always do. My husband, John, my three children, Rachel, Anthony, and Ava, and my mom and my mother-in-law, Karen Roy and Angela West. Also, thank you to Wendy and the selection committee. We certainly are fortunate to be in a place where Webster, where teachers can be recognized for all the hard work that is done. I just wish there were more of us that could be honored in this way. A special thank you to Kelly Nacastro, a former and current parent, who felt I was deserving and took a moment from the craziness of life to nominate me for this award. Also, a huge thank you to the others who took precious time to write what must have been truly stellar recommendations. My principal and vice principal, Rob Hathaway and Robin Jennings. My colleague and friend of many years, Michelle Perry. And a former parent, friend, and Plank South's PTA president, Linda Diagardi. Thank you, all of you. I also wanted to mention that I feel lucky to be part of a district that has shaped the teacher that I have become by offering many and varied opportunities for professional growth and affording me the opportunity to teach so creatively over the last 20 years. I have evolved into the teacher I am today based on these past experiences and the community that I am lucky enough to be a part of. My Plank South family of colleagues, the fabulous families I get to work with each year, their children, and last but not least, my fellow teammates at 5th grade, Jamie Berard, Akurdi, Michelle Perry, and Karen Preston. Together, all of us create a positive experience for our children. Thank you. Have a great evening.
I would also like to thank the PTA and the WTA for this amazing honor, and I'd like to thank Joe Montemaro for taking the time to nominate me. I'd also like to thank him and the other administrators for their support. They've learned not to run away when I show up in their offices now and say, hey, I was thinking, what if I did? As a consultant teacher, I don't have my own classroom. I do all of my work in the kids' regular classrooms, and I have been blessed, especially here at Spry, to work with the Red Six and the Blue Six teams. They've always welcomed me, they've supported my kids, and they've helped me become a better teacher. I also wanted to say a special thank you to a former Webster teacher, Bill Hickey, who, without his even knowing it, was my mentor for a lot of years, and his creativity and passion for his craft continues to inspire me every day. I'd also like to thank my husband, Bill, and my daughter, Maria, for all their love and support. They've put up with long hours at home with correcting and planning, and countless hours attending school events, and they always listen to all the stories that I have about my kids here at school. They say that all you really need to know, you learn in kindergarten, but the most important life lessons I've learned have come from my mom and my dad. Growing up, they instilled in me a love of learning and fostered a curiosity about life that I have never lost. They scrimped and saved to ensure that I could attend college and achieve my dreams, and I'm the person I am today because of their love and support. My mom lost her battle with cancer in December, but I know she is beaming in heaven, as only a proud mom can. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, Renette. Thank you, Central PTA and WTA for that. All right, we'll move into our superintendent report.
Okay. I want to start this evening by highlighting some budget information. We had our budget hearing, and I want to highlight that thanks to the district's comprehensive energy management plan, our district has reduced energy consumption by approximately $500,000 since 2010.
There you go. Can you hear me now? Sorry, everybody. Could you hear me? I'm starting with some budget information to kind of piggyback off the budget hearing, and wanted to highlight that thanks to the district's comprehensive energy management plan, the district has reduced energy consumption by approximately $500,000 since 2010, including the estimated $150,000 in savings that you will see in this year's budget, 2013-14. And to that point, I'd like to start my report by announcing that eight of our 11 buildings have earned the EPA's Energy Star designation, making our buildings as energy efficient as possible, is something our buildings and ground staff works on every year, and their hard work has come to fruition through this important designation. You can see on your screen now, the Energy Star designation ultimately results in savings for the district and our taxpayers. As Webster continues to enhance our energy management systems, we expect all of our buildings to receive this Energy Star designation. And you'll see, you'll see the ones listed on the screen, there's eight of them listed in this round. The elementary schools recognized include Clem Road North, Clem Road South, Schlegel Road, Plank Road South, Dewitt Road, State Road. Secondary schools are Willink Middle School and Thomas High School. And even good, more good news to share, this week, both Webster-Schrader and Webster-Thomas High Schools were ranked in Newsweek's 2013 America's Best High Schools. As you can see from this first slide, both Thomas and Schroeder have been progressively moving up in the Newsweek rankings since the '09-'10 school year. So you can see that, as you move from the bottom of this slide to the top, that both schools have moved up in the rankings, and that makes us extremely proud. These are good trends that we're seeing. As Newsweek states, it annually highlights the best 2,000 public high schools in the nation, those that have proven to be the most effective in turning out college-ready grads. The list is based on six components: graduation rates, college acceptance rate, advanced placement tests taken per student, average SAT and ACT scores, average AP scores, and percent of students enrolled in at least one AP course. So you can see our work in AP and graduation rates have really helped in that regard. So congratulations to the administrators, teachers, and students of Webster-Schrader and Webster-Thomas High School, who continue to make us all Webster schools proud. So we want to also note that both of our high schools are highly ranked in the region, and to see that list, you can go to our website, there's a spotlight story where you can see the complete list, or you can go to the DailyBeast.com, which we have on your screen, to see the complete list of that ranking. Now, there has been lots of talk on testing lately in the news and scores, so I did write a column this week about the 3-8 testing, and I encourage anyone that's interested in that column to go on our website and click on the superintendent's message, sign up for my messages if you would like, because I try to write relevant topics each week to the community. And tonight, what I want to do is talk about and show a demonstration of some of the shifts with high school. So we know that high schools are now being asked to focus on a statistic called College and Career Ready. And according to the research in the region's reform agenda, to ensure that students are graduating high school, college, and career-ready, New York State has raised expectations for student achievement within ELA and math. We're going to show you a slide to show the increased standards are reflected on this first slide, so let's take a look at that. So you can see on the left, we have high school ELA, and we have the old cut score, and then the new cut score. There are four levels of performance, okay? I want you to focus on the level threes, and look at the new cut score. An ELA is now 75 to 89. You can see the old one was 64 to 89. And in high school math, the new cut score is 80 to 89, and the old cut score was 65 to 84. So you can see that level three is where the changes are happening, okay? And this is because of research that says that if students can earn a 75 on a high school ELA regions and an 80 on a high school math regions, they can enter college without having to take any remedial coursework. So I wanted to just show you in graphic form what that looks like, and what we're going to look at is an analysis of last year's high school graduates data. So with this new cut score, okay, our '08 cohort of students that graduated last year, I'm trying to see the old and the new, and it- And this is because of research that says that if students can earn a seventy-five on a high school ELA regions and an eighty on a high school math regions, they can enter college without having to take any remedial coursework. So I wanted to just show you in graphic form what that looks like, and what we're going to look at is an analysis of last year's high school graduates data. So with this new cut score, okay, our oh-eight cohort of students that graduated last year, I'm trying to see the old and the new, and it, just, just look at the colors and see how the pie has shifted. So the, this is Schroeder High School ELA old cut scores on the left, and then you'll see the new cut scores on the right. And you'll see that the levels one and two have expanded a little bit, it's the level three that has most expanded in these new cut scores, because that's where the standards really rise. Okay, so let's take a look at Schroeder High School Math with the old cut scores. You see here that levels three and four take almost the whole pie, and then now you shift to the right and you see, um, the new cut scores, and you see that levels three and four, the green and the purple, are, are more than, you know, two-thirds of the pie, but where we have more in level two in this, in this graph. Let's look at Thomas. High school ELA with the old and the new. The old, we had level three and four, very, very small slices in one and two, and the new, again, you see more of that level two, and you see three and four also very well represented there. And then in math, we see, again, with, with the old, our students were absolutely in three and four, and then with the new, we see that we have more of those level twos. So the good news is that these are shifts in cut scores, not shifts in student performance, that our students are performing well, we have ninety percent of our students going to college, we have a strong graduation rate. And I just wanted to start to give the community an understanding of the new standards and what it looks like as, as we shift to the new standards in graphic form. So we'll be talking more about this as we go through this current testing cycle of region's tests, and we'll be discussing and analyzing those results when they come. So thank you very much, that's my report.
Thank you, Adele. We are now going to look at our treasures report. Jim?
Thank you. In front of you have the March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen treasures report, and for the month of March, we had receipts of about twelve and a half million dollars. About twelve million dollars of that came in the form of, one form or another of state aid. So this was a very good month where the state has, um, be given, given us the bulk of our state aid, um, and will be finishing that off from now till, uh, the end of June. So in our accounts, we had just over seventy-four million dollars, and all of that money is invested well. So when you turn to page two, you'll see the school lunch, federal fund, capital, trust and agency, the balances and dispersments and receipts for the month. And then on page three, you'll see our investments, and, um, good news is, the interest rate hasn't decreased. We're still at point two of one percent, and point five of one percent with some of our money at, um, one of our facilities. Just in, in total, we have just over seventy-eight million dollars invested. Answer any questions the board might have.
Saying none, may we entertain a motion to accept the treasures report?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, board members, I hope you brought your calendars. If you take a look at the draft schedule for our Board of Education calendar, it looks like we're having problems on determining a date for our board retreat in August. What do you think about an evening or Saturday meeting?
Evening is preferable.
Even if we did two evenings?
Maybe.
Because we can't, the two dates that were circulated, we just could not get every-
I just think it's too important to cut, cut short.
Well, what, what's the agenda for that day?
Wouldn't we be, uh-
Do we remember?
We'll look at that in the morning.
No, that's our, that's our July, I'm thinking of our August meeting.
Wouldn't we be looking at measurements of our goals and, um, ways in which we can help Adele help administration reach those goals?
How many dates were put out there? There weren't that many days.
There were two, but we could not get all seven of us.
I mean, there's thirty-some days in August.
All right, then-
Why can't we pick another day when everybody's available? Doesn't have to be Thursday.
Which means that's a lot of work on your part, Cindy, can you-
Can I have some more dates?
All right.
Maybe it's easier to say, what date aren't you available?
All right, besides that date, is there any red flags or any one on the rest of the calendar?
At the risk of repeating myself, I always wish we didn't have a Tuesday meeting.
You mean for the reorganization meeting? Uh, we do that, if I remember correctly, because there's the fireman's parade on Thursday. And those of us who live north of one oh-four would not be able to get in. So I, I guess we can't help you on that one. And don't we have to have that meeting before a certain date, I believe?
Fifteenth. Fifteenth of the month.
You have July second.
I can't do, I can't do July. Didn't even think about it being Tuesday.
What about Monday? July eighth? That work?
If you're just going to do the reorganization meeting, it could be a very short meeting. If you make me out, whatever day you do it, if you don't have a regular board meeting after that, the reorganization meeting is probably a half an hour meeting. Make all the approvals on the eighth, and then you could pick another day.
But couldn't we just do it all the eighth?
You could, yes.
I mean, if we're going to come, we might as well do it all if we can.
We'd mean, we'd get the agenda out, we'd, we'd have to discuss when the agenda would come to you.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying.
So we can, we can work all that out.
How's everybody look for the eighth?
Works? Okay. And I think there was another yellow flag for February.
What was that?
It was either a Saturday or a Thursday choice.
Oh, the retreat, or?
The retreat. If, I think we did have a Saturday scheduled meeting, but we moved it to a Thursday this year, or did we go through with it? I can't even remember, did we, we had it on Saturday? Okay.
I think we scheduled quite a, quite a few meetings in here with the idea that if we didn't need them, we could always eliminate them, it's just harder to add meetings than it is to take them away.
Why is that a red flag?
Why is it a red flag? Because we weren't sure what the preference on the board was.
So Saturday or Thursday? Either eighth or thirteenth?
Either one works. So we'll leave it as, and as we get closer to, we'll make that-
Only one that I'm not aware of is, uh, the potential of FRN.
Okay.
That happens, if it were the first.
Again, this is just the first reading. So we'll entertain a motion to accept this as the first reading, and there will obviously be corrections on our second reading.
All right.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, people, we'll move on to our school liaison reports. Fritz may start off with you, if you have one at all. Okay, Lisa? Jeanine? Laura? Tom?
I, I just have a short one. There's a Schlegel Road PTSA meeting on Tuesday evening, and as always, there's babysitting available, and the fourth graders are going fishing at North Ponds Park, and I just thought that sounded like a lot of fun, I believe, on the fifteenth and the sixteenth.
Except you'd need a license.
I'm sure they've made the appropriate arrangements, but it just sounds like fun.
Fourth graders don't need a license. Pardon?
And that's my report.
Right, but-
That's right, and they're, they're fourth graders, so, or maybe it's fifth grade, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't need it.
I didn't ask that question. I'm sorry.
They give you all the fish scales for fertilizer for your garden.
Wasn't there something else you were taking last year? Was it frogs or something? I forgot.
No, I said, leave your hands off my frog.
Oh. Tom, do you have anything from the steering committee?
No, I was not able to attend the steering.
Actually, we canceled the steering because we had no business.
Anything on legislative?
I forwarded the minutes to everybody.
That's correct, you did. At our last labor relations meeting, we heard from Ron Mendrick, and he gave a presentation about grievances in regard to the APPR plan and negotiations for extending the APPR. Uh, he reminded us that, to a large extent, almost everyone has a form of the APPR in their districts and collective bargaining, bargaining agreements. The, the big difference now is that accountability measures are now tied into state aid and , uh, the high-stakes teacher evaluation. And since we haven't even gone through a full year of this yet, we really don't know what to expect. So it's, stay tuned, see what happens. Uh, information sharing is done for the year. Sue, do you want me to do executive, or do you, you want to report on that?
Uh, we just approved the budget. You know, the executive committee approved the budget for the year, and we had our last meeting.
There also was a subgroup that's meeting with the DNC editorial-
Yes, you're right.
Highlighting the excellence in our schools, and we hope that, you might see an article about that. And there was another group that is working to highlight all the good things that are happening in Monroe County, and they're trying to put a display at the airport.
Thank you.
So that's what's happening in the executive side. Tom, anything from NISBA?
The seventeenth, uh, at NISBA, I'll be hosting the, uh, State Education Commissioner, Dr. King, or one of his lieutenants. And there'll be people representing, I think Chuck Allen is from Monroe County School Board, there's another person coming from Area Two that'll be there, so each area has two to three representatives, um, there, so there's about twenty-five people in attendance. It's usually a very good discussion.
Thank you, Tom. Jeanine, anything on the audit? No? Okay. I apologize, Sue, I did not get back to you on policy.
Well, I, I did a summary of, um, what we wanted to say about policy for our operations manual, I believe I sent it to you, um, and Carmen as well. We can just put that draft into the operations manual, and then we can review it in the fall when we have our next meeting, if that's, you know, there's a lot going on. Okay, so that's what we'll do. Did you get a copy of that? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Lisa, do you have anything to say on the budget?
Great big thank you, we mentioned it earlier. Will we have a debrief meeting this year, like we have in the past, after the vote? We decided that we would do an electronic debrief, because it is usually very nice weather, and we don't get as much participation in the debrief, so if we do it electronically, we're hoping that everyone will fill out the survey, and it'll kick us off for planning for next year.
Super.
Again, very much grateful for the committee and committee's work. Did we highlight that there'll be a budget newsletter being sent out to families? Yeah, I think that's important to note, that the Budget Advisory Committee was very instrumental in helping with the budget messaging, and there'll be a, and, uh, communication, oh, yeah, tomorrow is Friday, that's sent out to families tomorrow, so look in your mailbox over the weekend for a budget newsletter, it really has lots of great information about the budget, talks about the board, uh, election and the profiles of our board candidates this year.
Okay, board members, we've, you've had a chance, hopefully, to look at the consent agenda. It includes minutes from our workshop, and personnel actions, and recommendations on the committee on special education, uh, resolution to appoint a deputy chief inspector at our election, and there's also some miscellaneous cooperative bids. May we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh, before we have a motion to adjourn, I'm just going to remind you that we have a workshop next Thursday, and that our budget vote is May twenty-first. You're looking like you forgot that we have a workshop, and that you're going to be part of it, presenting on the national conference. Tom, can you also present on that? Thank you. May we have a motion to entertain adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.